Want to welcome you to the regular school board meeting of the Duluth Public Schools ISD 709. It's Tuesday, May 17th. We're getting a little late start at 6:40, but we're glad that our community is here. And again, this is the regular school board meeting. We're here at Denfeld High School as we are in transition from our meeting at the Hox Center Building that we were at for millions of years. And now we are in the process of building a new business service building for us up on the Central Hillside site. So it's exciting, but in the meantime, we get a chance to come out to the different schools here at Denfeld and often at East High School. So, welcome to the ISD 709 regular school board meeting, meeting here tonight at Denfeld High School. I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Oswald for roll.
Member Edert, present. Member Kirby.
Here.
Member Laffler Kim.
Here.
Chair Lowfald.
Here.
Member Oswald, hey, that's me. Here I am. Member Sadowski.
Here.
Member Sandholm.
Here.
Superintendent Magus.
Present.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds is excused. Deputy Clerk Erickson.
Here.
HR Director Severance.
Here.
Board Secretary Paquette.
Here.
Denfeld Rep Soraya Crawford.
Here.
And East Rep Eileen Noss.
Is excused.
Is excused, yes. I turned my head like.
They know she shouldn't be here.
We have a corner chair.
Thank you. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance and the flag is behind us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you've had time to review our agenda for this evening, so I'm looking for a motion to approve our agenda.
So move.
Member Edert makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Sadowski, seconds. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We have an agenda for us tonight. Moving on to number five, it is the school and community recognition. And I'm going to invite our communication officer, Adele Will?
Wellens.
Wellens. Thank you. Thanks for being with us tonight.
No problem. So I'm reading this on behalf of Assistant Superintendent Anthony Bonds. Dear School Board Members and Board Chair Lowfald, Denfeld High School is in its fifth year of being a BAR school, and the success of its program comes down to the people on the ground doing the work. BAR stands for Building Assets, Reducing Risks. It is an educational model that focuses on teachers creating strong relationships with students as a way to make sure students succeed. Over 50 staff members at Denfeld have been part of building the BAR program at the high school throughout the years, and that number continues to grow. Each individual person from administration to teachers, counselors, social workers, integration specialists, school psychologists, and administrative assistants have played an important role in building and sustaining a quality program to support our students. Recently, ninth grade counselor and BAR coordinator Jennifer Wellnitz and Denfeld Principal Tom Tuscan attended the BAR National Conference in Palm Springs, California, where Denfeld was awarded the BAR 2022 School of Excellence Honor. Denfeld is one of six schools out of 200-plus BAR schools in the nation to receive this designation. This is a very big honor that is all due to Denfeld's intentional commitment to building and fostering positive relationships with our ninth grade students. So we want to say congratulations to the Denfeld High School staff, Counselor Wellnitz, and Principal Tuscan for their continued work with intentional commitment to building and fostering positive relationships with our ninth grade students.
Graduation practice.
Are you going to say anything?
Yeah.
I can say whatever you'd like, but I will tell you that.
Say what you would like.
I'll just sit down. I guess what I'd like to say first of all is, thanks for the commitment and support of Duluth Public Schools because BAR is fantastic. It's research-based, it's evidence-based, it is all the best things. It's one of the best programs in the country that actually has an evidence base from which to grow off of. The federal government's done a lot of research on BAR and the proof is in the pudding. All that being said, the key part is that the district supports it, and that comes in the financial realm because it is, it's not super expensive, but it's not cheap. But it also comes from people asking about it and making sure we have it, we need to be successful with BAR. So it really represents one of the best projects you can do as a district because from the teachers that are actually implementing it, like the notification said, to the people like you guys that make sure that we have the finances available to do it, it is, it's fantastic. And it shows what we want to do for our kids, and it makes a difference every day. So, so thank you from my perspective for supporting the program and making it possible for us to continue. So, the last piece I can share about it is, we are looking at implementing it in 10th grade next year.
Yeah. Remember that?
So yeah, it's super exciting.
So before Tom goes too, and I know, you know, boy, Tom, 2008, 2009, it wasn't called BAR then, but the same founder and creator of BAR was the founder and creator, and what did we call it?
We called it the Ninth Grade Core back then.
Yeah, Ninth Grade Core.
So before BAR became BAR branded, we actually were trained at St. Louis Park where this project or program originated. We were trained by the founder, Angie Jerovic, who is still the person that's in charge of BAR. So we've actually implemented BAR twice. The first time it didn't have the BAR name, but it was still BAR. All the elements still existed, the social-emotional learning still was there, the team meetings with kids. So this is actually our second time through BAR. And literally, we went to Palm Springs and Jenny Wellnitz, who should be sitting here with me, said, well, I keep going to these sessions and I keep going, yeah, we're doing that, we're doing that, which is part of the reason they recognize us as the School of Excellence because part of why you get the results you get is because you follow the program with fidelity, and that's what we do. And so, it's reaffirming to go to a school or go to a conference like that and be able to say, yeah, we do that, we do it really well. And we've been able to bring it to other schools. Superior came and visited us, other schools have come here, and that's part of the reason they want to do Schools of Excellence now, is so they can say if schools are interested, go see Denfeld High School, so we can kind of show them what a top-flight program looks like at BAR.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Tremendous.
I'm hoping that our Duluth News Tribune would pick up a story, or maybe they have. I think there was, yeah, it's just really phenomenal. And again, I was part of the early Ninth Grade Core Program. Tom and I sat on a team.
We were on the same team.
Same team together with the same group of ninth graders shepherded in through. So I certainly can speak of its fidelity and its impact from my years serving as a Ninth Grade Core teacher. Good job. Thank you. So our next item on our agenda, number six, is our public comment. And so before we start, we've got Clerk Oswald will go over our guidelines for our public comment, and then if I can have a board member read the 11 Tools of Civility that's in our folders, that would be great as well.
Public comment information, information to know when you sign up to speak at board meetings. Persons wishing to address the school board must sign in prior to the meeting listing their name and the matter in which you will speak. If you have any handouts for the board, please give them to the school board secretary that's right here behind me and exists over there most of the time. Persons addressing the board will speak in the order in which they signed up. Each person addressing the board will have three minutes total. When speaking, the use of names or any information that identifies a specific individual is legally prohibited and will be asked to end your comments. Persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow one person to speak for more than three minutes. The clerk of the board, me, will start the stoplight timer here at the start of each person's time, hopefully if I remember. Sorry, there's occasions when I miss, I know, I'm sorry. I do my best. A green light means go, yellow light means start wrapping up, and a red light means stop. When the red light comes on, the chair will gavel to signal you to stop. Persons addressing the board shall confine their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or relevant to matters of administrative concern. Now, a board member will read the 11 Tools of Civility.
This school board recognizes 11 Tools of Civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, take responsibility, be honest and care for others, show your evidence, share your reasoning.
Thank you. So going forward, we have two community members to speak. Our first member is Jim Jubenville. You can choose to either stand or sit, whatever your preference is.
Oh, I think I'll sit.
All right. Hello, my name is Jim Jubenville, and I'm a special education teacher at Merrick Creek Academy. I'm also the co-facilitator for the labor management process for the DFT. I wanted to speak before the school board tonight to summarize how the year went in regards to labor management from my point of view. I also wanted to share what I thought was a very positive working relationship with Assistant Superintendent Bonds and myself. One area that we improved in as the school year went on was trying to lower the amount of agenda items to a more workable number for the committee meetings. We emphasized to committee members the importance of getting issues solved at the site level before being brought to labor management meetings. We reached agreements on several items, including increasing subpay, compensation for prep time in regards to administering the MCAs, keeping the grading window open for teachers until the last day of school with grades mailed home after record day. Other items included a pause on blended learning and take-home COVID-19 tests. Items of concern from the DFT's viewpoint include the COVID-19 policy of crediting only three hours for an eight-hour workday. The DFT feels that this is a two-class system of haves and have-nots. As far as I know, we still don't know the financial impact on the district for increasing sick time compensation, even though we've asked for it a number of times. Also, there is a need for reducing class sizes in certain schools throughout the district. Full-time media specialists at the secondary level is a need as well. Furthermore, there are still issues of teachers losing lunchtime, prep, and due process due to meeting, student coverage, et cetera. These teachers are not always getting compensated fairly due to this prep time infringement. There's a lack of transparency when it comes to the budget and the budget process. The DFT is not a part of the process when it comes to positions created in the district and what we feel is important and needed. Also, where did all the S or money go and how much is remaining? Furthermore, there's been quite a bit of money spent in creating positions away from working directly with students. We are truly about what is best for the children, and why isn't more money spent on educators working directly with students? Finally, the success of labor management will really be determining what happens in the coming months in regards to committee work done on the eight-day rotation at the elementary level and looking at the secondary schedule options. Additionally, for the last decade, the DFT has asked for a Setting Four program in our district, and we still have no true movement on this matter. In my opinion, we deserve to hear what is our district priority in getting these plans implemented, and are they willing to reallocate funding towards the classroom to offer better educational programming to our students? Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Andrea Hannig.
I'll come over this way a little bit so you can see. This is Cyber. Service dog that you were. Do that, of course. Down. Down. Good. Hi, so my name is Andrea Hannig, and my son is at Lester Park just as of March 18th. We had the privilege of being there, and I just want to say hi. We are the reason for the service animal policy coming about, and I just want to, I guess, put us out there. And we were actually at the last meeting, the big meeting, I don't know if you saw it, but we were way over in the corner, and we were here. My son was here for, y'all remember, we were here for many, many hours. And most people didn't notice that we were here at all. We didn't make, we didn't cause disturbance, so I was pretty proud of that fact. And I just want to, I guess, there are a few things that I would like to see part of the policy. One of them would be that students that would, like, for example, harass or feed or, you know, engage the animal, that they get teaching or, you know, some kind of education, and just that there's a step-by-step process for dealing with that. Because that's, that would be similar to if you were to, a kid were to kick a crutch or kick, you know, something like, I mean, that's serious. That's taking away a child's, you know, tool, mobility tool or whatever. So it's a serious, you know, infringement on a person with the civility's rights. So I would want that maybe added to the policy, address that. And I do, I really, I see the need for, I understand wanting the policy, and I see, I think it could be really helpful. I understand the desire for the district to want to protect itself from, you know, from things that could happen. But I want you to be careful that you're not protecting yourself too much, where you might be actually setting yourself up for, like, for ADA violations and stuff, because you're maybe denying people possibly to come into the school by asking. So part of the policy is that you require people to fill out a form and to submit vaccination things, and that's, I tried getting ahold of the ADA, you know, line to talk to someone to, I mean, I was trying to, really, I want to help, I like, I want this to work well. So, but it's really, it's naudible to get ahold of someone. So, that, anyway, it's, it's a borderline. It really is questionable whether you could do that. So really, you know, that means that someone that is coming to the door, if you're going to, that has a service animal, you know, you're going to tell them, no, did you submit your form? I mean, if you're really going to do that, yeah, if that's what you're saying you're going to do. I would hope that you guys, you know, wouldn't do that. Like, that's what, so, so I would love to, I'm available to talk through this, and I have, you know, a lot of experience with this, and I've done a lot of research, and so I, I would love to talk through it. I'm, Jason can attest that I am willing to have difficult conversations and be open and honest and just, and listen, totally listen. So please get in touch with me if you're willing. Otherwise, thank you for letting me talk. Thank you. Cyber Stan.
So next on our agenda is number seven, and it's Reading Communications and Petitions, of which there were none. So that moves us to number eight. And under number eight, it's the Report of the Superintendent. This is where we get reports from our student reps. It's where we hear superintendent's report, and we also review the scheduled meetings and events that are upcoming for the board. So I will turn this portion of the agenda to Superintendent Magus.
Thank you. Just trying to cast to the screen here a second. There we go. So tonight's meeting have several topics during my superintendent's report. Of course, the highlight, we start with the best. Why wait for dessert? You're first. We have our student representative reports, followed by some COVID updates, and negotiations update, or actually, I'm sorry, that was changed, that should be legislative update, sorry. There's a negotiations update last time, but I can provide some basic information on negotiations. Strategic planning update, as well as just a quick update on my evaluation process that's underway, and much appreciated as we move forward. But saving, or starting with some of the best, let's start with Soraya Crawford, who will be your report from Denfeld High School.
All right. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Sarah.
Soraya, I hope you guys are well.
Thank you.
Have a good time since I've seen you guys. Okay, to start, I'm just going to run through the list of everything that's happened at Denfeld. Okay. Well, as you guys have already heard about how the BAR recognized Denfeld as one of the, instead of 200 bar schools, that was awesome. Um, sorry, I'm nervous. All right.
That's because your principal's here.
Always next to me.
April 29th, we had our red carpet concert where our band, choir, and orchestra performed together. It was beautiful. May 7th, we had our first in-person prom since 2019. It was very needed. The seniors and juniors were very happy. Also on May 7th, our robotics team, we just call it Denfeld Nation Automation, competed at the Minnesota State High School League State Tournament, and they finished 12 out of 36 and made the state tournament. May 10th, we had our 96th Annual Honor Society Ceremony, and we had cake. So good. I'm sorry, it was really good. May 11th. May 11th, our sophomores went to Construct Tomorrow, where they, you know, where they went to learn about the very many trades there are. Last week, we wrapped up MCA testing. May 13th, some of our ACT SO students performed a poem, performed poems at the White Privilege Symposium, and it was awesome. We got free T-shirts. May 17th, today, we had a job fair where 35 different employers came in and talked to our students and tried to get them to, you know, sorry, to.
Apply for a job.
Yes. Apply for a job.
Or needy. We should have been there.
A whole bunch of free stuff. May 19th, we're going to have our Romeo and Juliet play in the school's front yard, if the weather will hold up for us. May 26th, we're going to have our honors night, where our seniors will be rewarded tons of scholarship dollars. And we will also be honoring our honoredees from the other grade levels. May 27th, we have the senior end-of-the-year assembly, where Bell Bank will be awarding a $2,000 scholarship to one of our seniors. June 8th, we are going to have an end-of-the-year ascent of field trip to Valley Fair, where scholarships will be rewarded. And even, and those who will not be going on the trip will stay at school and have a pause day where they get to work in the morning. And in the afternoon, the Duluth Police Department will serve ice cream. And June 9th is our graduation in our auditorium.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think it's all hungry here. We've been here for a while.
Starting with cake and ending with. It's a good report. Ms. Noss is not here. She did send her report. Would you like to read it?
Yeah. So Chair Lowfald asked if I would read it, and I hope I do as well as you. I'm a little nervous too. I quickly looked at Eileen's written report that I'm going to read, and you had mentioned two things that she mentioned too about Construct Tomorrow. East 10th graders attended Construct Tomorrow as well, and they also had a similar job fair that happened here, so I'm glad you mentioned that. So Eileen wanted everyone to know that East had Red and Gray Week last week with an Oscars theme, and they crowned Mr. and Mrs. East. The Miss East candidates were Claire Beaumire, Sophia Revere, Lucy Samala, Brooke Payne, and Casey Menigni. The Mr. East candidates were Cameron Donahue, Aiden Young, Amma Okoro, Daniel Nimi, and Jackson Decamas, excuse me for the pronunciation. That one is Decamba. I only know that because his dad is a teacher in our district. Okay, thank you so much. The winners were Amma Okoro and Sophia Revere. Exec put on a well-attended movie night as well as a cake walk, sorry, board, at lunch that people were excited to participate in. Even though burnout is at its peak right now, we were able to make the most of our week. And I know, I happened to be at East a couple times and saw a lot of very creative costumes going on for the different days. More people than ever at East are advancing to Nationals for History Day. Grace Vester and Martine Dahl got first place for the History Day Project at State. Natalie Miller wrote a paper and got first at State, and Emma Ambrosi and Tavern Rock both also advanced. Track sections are in two weeks. Leif Ziering broke the school record for pole vault. Jackson Decamas just broke a meet record for mile time. Exec and Association are selecting new boards for next, next week, for next year. We're working very hard to select a diverse board and make sure all groups in the school are represented. Got to do a little plug for Association, my kids are in that. The play Harvey was the week before prom. Turnout was good, and the play was really well done. Thomas Rossette played the lead role, Elwood P. Dodd. Prom was May 7th, and also in-person, and it also was a success. There were multiple photo booths for many picture opportunities, as well as snacks in a game room. Seniors were very excited to have their one and only prom, and juniors were happy to have their first. Some students in levels three and four in Spanish and German are taking the SEAL of Biliteracy test right now and hopes to receive a SEAL on their transcripts. That's a really cool thing. The talent show at Ordine had a surprisingly large turnout. Acapella did a wonderful job with creative skits, and all the acts were very entertaining. Home pack applications for next year were due yesterday, and home pack is freshman orientation. Sure tryouts happened recently. Girls Across is having a great season so far. They had a teen bonding dinner at East last night and have games today and Friday. Choraliers are waiting for their audition results, and Sterling, which is the orchestra, has their new members decided. Yearbook has picked out their new members for next year, and the yearbooks just came in. They have gone through and organized them all by grade, and they will be adding the supplements tomorrow. Yearbooks will be distributed on the 27th. So they're very busy up there at East. I was there a couple times last weekend at lunchtime, and it was fun to run into some kids. Yeah. Thank you, students. Thank you. Busy times. Probably should have had Board Kirby, who has a senior this year, read this next month, if she's not here.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in as well. So next on the agenda is our COVID update, and actually, last month was the only month in my superintendent's report that we did not have a COVID update, but COVID is back in our update this month, unfortunately. We are seeing continuing increase in rates. St. Louis County has moved from a green low transmission level to yellow medium transmission for community. to yellow medium transmission for community spread. Indoor mask wearing is recommended, but not required at this time. And we continue to assess the new information each Thursday, as it's shared from the county. And just, you know, personally, I informed the board and informed the community through my newsletter that I had COVID last week, and I am just out of quarantine myself, and thus required mask wearing. But it's a good reminder that despite things moving in positive directions in general, that we all need to make sure that we're staying safe. We're thinking about ensuring that we're doing testing. You know, with the budding trees, it was easy for me to think maybe it was just seasonal allergies kicking up a little bit. But it's important for us to make sure that we're following those safety measures. Also, we're also starting to see some strain on our staffing as well. Our sub systems are starting to get into a somewhat strained position. What we're asking for, people to rotate in, not the same rotation that we've had, but we're asking for volunteers to assist. And so if members of the community are able to sign up for subbing, or if there are other people out there that are interested, we greatly appreciate that opportunity. As far as the legislative update, that was instead of the negotiations update. Last Wednesday, Kathy Erickson and I testified before the Joint Finance Committee on behalf of the Association of Metropolitan School Districts regarding the Special Education Cross Subsidy. And not saying that this was a direct result because of it by any means, but on Monday in St. Paul, Governor Walz and legislative leaders reached an agreement on a framework to end the 2022 Legislative Session. And the deal includes $1 billion increase in educational funding, which is yet to be determined. So we're thinking there may be some effects on the Special Education Cross Subsidy. There may be some other elements, as well as probably some funding for pilot programs and things of that nature. But it's good news. It's not, it's not maybe what some people were hoping for as far as increases in funding, but a billion dollars is still a nice increase for us to see. As far as our strategic planning, some of the things that we talked about last month that were going to happen have happened. We had our board work session on April seventh, and we're discussing another session in probably in July, mid-July. We have a couple of dates that was most popular thus far, but I'll send those back out to the board so you can give your input there. We also had a great story wall and life cycle session up at Lincoln Park Middle School, looking at the past thirty years of the district, where we've been, what were some of the big initiatives, what were some of the big challenges, and how were they dealt with. And seeing that was really, really important for us to really look at where we've been. The environmental scan looks at where we're at, and that was done a week ago last Thursday. And I assure you, I just swallowed wrong. It's not time.
Oh, there's no problem.
Thank you. Actually, Paul always has a cup. I'm gonna set it there just in case. But we had our environmental scan that looks at what is our current reality today, with some of the challenges facing us, as well as some of the opportunities. We've also had quite a few desired daily experience engagement sessions with staff, students, families, and community members. And Soraya talked about her experience as a student in one of those sessions. And then I would say another highlight for us was last night. Our Education Equity Advisory Committee, EA, had a desired daily experience meeting that was specifically intended to try to get as many BIPOC voices into the room. And there were nearly fifty people that were there during the session that was held downtown at the American Indian Community Center. And we also tried to make sure that we had childcare, we had transportation. We tried to take every barrier out of the way because we wanted to make sure that we had as many diverse voices into our planning as possible. Tomorrow night, we'll be working on, with our teamwork's team, on putting together a draft from all that input that we've received on what are the daily desired experiences of staff, families, and students. And then, as I've mentioned before, the process is gonna run through the fall of next year, looking at our current reality, describing our vision, and then setting our action plans. Our three-year operational plan as a district, school improvement plans for our schools, as well as a three-year board agenda and action plan, if that's something that the board is partaking in, which appears that that's the direction we're going. As far as my evaluation, this is, we met earlier tonight in closed session for beginning the conversations related to my evaluation process. And it was a great opportunity for conversation, for input, for me to share some things as far as where I've been as a superintendent, what were the strengths, what were some of the challenges, and also for the board to share with me as well. And we're looking forward to having part two in the very near future, just because it's meant to be a conversational growth process that takes place over time and allows us, the board time to reflect, and for me to reflect as well, to put together those summative pieces. And then we'd be sharing more information at that time. So that is the conclusion of my superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Crawford.
I have a question that's like not really related to what has been said. Is that okay?
Sure. Because, well, it could be a comment under your, in connection with your report, so we could take it down.
I want to know, will we also be meeting over the summer?
Yes, school board does meet over the summer. So.
Sorry.
We'll have plenty of time to keep visiting. And, and you know, the, so you'll have to keep your ear open and be starving for things still happening at Denfeld and your community. You can even branch out, maybe to the middle schools, I don't know. But certainly, there are some challenges when it's June and July, and we're not fully in swing. But there are lots of things happening in the summer programs here at Denfeld, I would imagine, and you can kind of keep up with that and stay connected to Mr. Tustin. I think they kind of have a little break in July, so he might not be as available then, but make sure to check.
If I remember correctly as well, we talked as a board last year about we kind of keep the board work agendas relatively light in the month of July. We were kind of sticking to just the board meeting and limiting or not having as many committee meetings. So if we're still doing that, that would be good for me to know. And if the board has any feedback on that, feel free to share as well. But we really look forward to having you, and it's nice to hear you enthusiastically saying, "Great, we get to meet in the summer."
I actually have an addition to your legislative update, and I just looked it up of interest to school board members anyway that work in, that are able to work in the district. The limit, the bill that limits our member compensation to $8,000, it looks like it's going to be increased. At least it's passed two readings in the House and three readings in the Senate to raise it to $20,000 instead. So we'll, the whole school board may be able to sub a heck of a lot more if we need it next year.
Could be a part-time bus driver.
Yeah. There you go. It's Bill SF 3107, if you want to follow it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Oswald, for bringing that up. I think that was one of the ones that came out of the school board legislative delegation that we adopted back in December, whenever it was that we, you and I were on that board and met. And one of the things, just note, a lot of smaller communities, you know, that's really necessary right now, even more so for filling positions, is that board members are involved, particularly retired folks. But I just wanted to comment, though, Superintendent Maga, on your taking the opportunity with our lobbyist, Jeff Anderson, to speak at a committee meeting last week. That's really an honor to get to ask, to be down there to speak on behalf of a district. And in my former life, you know, I used to do a lot of policy work, and so I know the importance of you being asked to be down there and getting on the agenda, as well as just representing our district that way. And so appreciate the craziness of everything of your job right now at this time of the year, just making sure you saw that as a priority for us. And I just wanted to recognize that as well. So thank you from the board.
Thank you. And I would say, first of all, I'd like to show appreciation for CFO Erickson, who did much of the work of putting together the statistics and the background information for the presentation. I was, I did feel like it was an honor, and it was a fun kind of stretch for me as an individual and as a superintendent to have that opportunity. And I'd also like to say how much we appreciate Jeff Anderson and the work he's done on lobbying. Some people might think like, oh, that's different that the school district has their own lobbyist. But we have, it has benefited the district far more financially and otherwise than not having a lobbyist. When Chair Chamberlain and Chair Dabney were asking questions, one of the questions they asked, partly because of the advocacy done over time by the team, is how much was the funding inadequacy that had been in place for multiple, multiple years? And what was the ask for us to be able to maybe have that put back into our funds? And that was, that was a $5 million difference that we were able to share there in front of the Joint Finance Committee because of the previous work that had been done by the former superintendent CFO and Jeff Anderson. So if that work, you know, even if it has a slight chance of being part of it, $5 million is $5 million in addition to whatever might have been swayed through the other testimony that was given. There was other great testimony by others around mental health and many other supports too. So thank you.
Thank you. And I should mention, Jeff Anderson is actually gonna be speaking to the Duluth area PTSA leaders via Zoom this Friday to give them an update and kind of one last chance before the session closes next week to lobby as well. So he's also, has been really good about doing that the last few years, is kind of reaching out to our parent group, so.
Seeing no other comments, it moves us then to our agenda number nine, which is reporting of our standing committees and for our people here at our meeting, and also those that watch us via our YouTube site. Our standing committees meet once a month, and so many of our standing committees met May third, and the other ones were, you know, the following week. And committee works are really important. It's when we get together and really have stronger dialogue. And then when we come back to the board tonight, we simply, you know, review quickly what was covered in our committee meetings. Many of the items are put on our consent agenda, so they go through and we approve them. But everything that we're discussing under our report of our standing committees were things we have done this past month as board members and moving our district forward. So our first committee of the, standing committee is our committee of the whole, which I usually turn over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds, but I certainly can recap that we met on May third. And if you remember, we had presentations, we had an action item, and it's gonna be on our consent agenda. And that was the presentation that Sherri Williams, our director of our early childhood and Head Start Coordinator, came. And there are yearly obligations the program has for our approval. And so Sherri came before us to explain the school year 2020 cost of living adjustment and how that grant was going towards that, and the COLA, and then also about quality improvement. And so she was asking, sharing us information, and then, you know, asking us to approve the grants for those programs. And then, so that's on the consent agenda, is our approval of the Head Start, public schools Head Start programs. And then our next was an informational presentation, and that was, we had the pleasure of meeting our new coordinator of adult education, at least new to the board, and she's taking over as Angie Frank. And so she reviewed that, the things going on for adult education. And we got a chance to talk to her, meet with her, and listen to the different programs that our adult basic ed covers. And then our last committee of the whole was Superintendent Maga sharing strategic planning updates. Any questions on our committee of the whole meetings and what we covered?
No questions. I just, I'd like to say, you know, how much I appreciate all the work that Sherri Williams did on the grants. Those are a lot of work, and we're very lucky to have her writing those and being kind of attentive to our ECP programs. They're really obviously very important. And then as far as Angie Frank and her presentation, I really appreciated learning about the career path in adult basic ed. I hadn't been as familiar with that as some of the other programs like Pathways and the Adult Diploma, so that was really great to hear that she's able to offer those to our adult population.
Actually, if I could add to that, I'm sorry, looking at the notes on my phone from something, but Sherri Williams was actually interviewed by NPR regarding our urban public school nature-based preschool. And that was on NPR this morning. So if you're interested in hearing more about Sherri Williams and the great things, all you have to do is listen to our state public radio.
So many good things going on. So moving on, we're gonna hear from the Human Resource Finance Committee.
I'm gonna ask for CFO Erickson's support because my notes are sitting on my desk. It's the last of us, so we're just gonna wing this. Not wing it, because I take, but extemporaneous, no, what is it?
Extemporaneous.
Extemporaneous HR. Yeah. So we started out in our meeting.
Just in case, I don't think you'll leave me. You'll do great.
We had our meeting in May. So we had our meeting, we started out, or May tenth, there it is, with our HR report. And Director Severance wasn't there, but as usual, she sent an amazing update. And it looks as if we are hiring, open enrollment is going on right now, which is important. Is that over, is open enrollment? It's over now, but at the time, it was going. And then just looking at where we were at with contract negotiations, and we will be approving some of those resolutions this evening with our principals, clerical and non-certified business, and then also the EEA as well. And then we will be starting our contract negotiations with the firemen and the oilers. That's coming up late June, early July. Does that sound right? Okay. And then we are still working on dates for the Duluth District-wide Instructional Administrative Association, and then waiting for the directors to request some time to reconvene. Director Severance, does that sound good? All right, excellent. I did skip over, no, next is our business services, and that's our finance department, which is a verbal report. And we just talked about CFO Erickson.
We just talked about our budgeting processes and all the work we're doing. Simone gave a great report on just kind of updating some of the processes and getting some of our staff trained up. So our payroll department, we have now fully staffed again after having some turnover there. So they're doing a great job there. So we're getting excited about year end.
And then also the improvement and the process that's going on with the new way that we budget for student activities, the work on that is continuing.
Yes.
All right, that's great. Next, we had our enrollment report. We had that adjusted a little bit, and our enrollment was adjusted up slightly to around 8,000 students.
Correct.
So that was good to hear. Next, we had child nutrition. I think one of the biggest things that we take from the child nutrition report is that they are desperate for workers. They get workers trained in and then bring them in, and then other workers are leaving. So as usual, we're having difficulty staffing some of those.
Can I just add? We will be having summer food service in the school buildings from Myers-Wolken's West. Many of our staff work in the summer, but a lot of our staff take other jobs during the off-season. So we'll have some limited, but we're looking forward to providing those meals like we have in the past years.
Thank you. That's the most important thing out of that. Next is our facilities report. Mr. Spooner gave our facilities report. Mr. Spooner gave our Facilities Report and Facilities looked good. We're still doing some work on the track out here for Lane One. That seems to be perpetually a problem. The other exciting thing is construction on the hill is starting. So if you drive by Masaba and Central Entrance, you can see that they've done a ton of work to bring up utilities and everything up to our building over there. Health and safety continues to go well. So that was our facilities and our capital. Next was technology and I think one of the big takeaways from technology is that Bart and his team have worked really diligently to get the smart boards installed. And what is of note for how Bart and his team did that is they came in on second shift. So they let the teachers and the students be in their classrooms all day long and then Bart and his team came in after school was dismissed and got all of the smart boards upgraded. I talked to a teacher at Piedmont and they were thrilled to have their new smart board. So that's fantastic. I think that's everything there. Next was transportation. Very exciting to find out, we're getting two new buses.
Tell us about that.
We ordered two school buses. This is part of our rotation. As you know, for several years past, the district was unable to purchase school buses. In the past three years, we have done some newer used buses to try to leverage some of our dollars, but we have to start bringing in some of those new buses for mileage reasons. You'll see in every transportation report, there's the average miles of our bus and we're improving, but we still have a ways to go on some of those. So we continue to do that. If you recall, last month, we shared that we actually did an engine replacement rather than a new school bus because special education equipped buses are very hard to come by right now and the lead time to get one was going to be much longer than what we needed. So we actually just spent, I think it was around $12,000 to replace the engine so that that bus will be new to us as far as miles and engine. So that was a really important thing to make sure we had maintaining that. So very excited about being able to keep that going. We probably have a few more years of trying to get the cycle back to where it should be, but we're excited about being able to do that investment for the transportation.
And soon they'll have a bus bar.
Yeah.
Which is very exciting. And I think we're, and the other thing of note in the transportation report is I love seeing the number of field trips and for April, there was 54 and for May, there's 86 field trips. So one of those, I will be attending for Piedmont. I'll be riding the bus as a chaperone. We have some recommended resolutions, approval of the Duluth Principals Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, also acceptance of grant awards to Duluth Public Schools, acceptance of donations. And on our consent agenda, we have our HR staffing report and that's always a great report to look through, sometimes sad because you see staff that are retiring and leaving the district. We have our financial report and then we had a bid to purchase two new school buses that we talked about in the transportation report. We have a contract with Cross-Anderson Construction Company. This had to do with a new bathroom on the first floor for setting, is it a special education?
It is.
Yep.
And the reason that we are doing a change order here is that we actually got a reduced cost because of the delay and being able to get supplies and equipment to do it. Cross-Anderson came back in and we actually are going to have to pay less. So it's still exactly what we need and we're looking forward to getting that done.
So that was great to see. Just a property upgrade from Mr. Fulmer, then we had expenditure contracts and some no-cost contracts. And that sums up our extemporaneous HR Business Services Report for me. Thank you.
Any questions?
We just have a comment, but I'll wait till if anyone has questions.
Just real quick, was there a pause on the utilities connection on the central, on the hill?
For about one hour.
Okay.
We had been working with the city of Duluth on memorandum of understanding to be able to start the poll of utilities. The city contacted Vite, our construction, and said, hey, we're still looking for this signed agreement. We had been told by the city to move forward with it and it was just more of a glitch. And so we were able to get that executed within the hour and they were back on the job.
Okay, thank you. Good to hear. I heard something, that's why.
Yep, it was, it was literally one, and it was actually a misunderstanding by the city, so we were excited to get that going. So it was just a very temporary stop.
Thank you, CFO Erickson.
Thank you, CFO Erickson. Thank you.
I just had one comment, Chair Local, on one agenda item that's going to, we're going to be voting on in the consent agenda, but just so you can look ahead, it's the resolution about acceptance of grant awards and all of the grants listed there are from the Duluth Public Schools Fund.
Yeah.
And as I think many people know, we have this fund. It's through the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation and I serve as a liaison for the board to that Board of Directors and we have a lot of retired teachers that serve on that board as well, as well as some current teachers. And just, if you add up really quickly, $32,000 in grants are going to be given. They were written by staff across our district, so 20 grants, $32,000 from 10 different schools and a lot of really cool, exciting projects. So take a moment there and go on the website if you want to learn more about what they're doing. But it's always exciting in May when we get to, all the work that this committee does comes to futation when the board supports this agenda item. So, thank you.
Those are fun to look through.
Thank you, Chair Edger. Just to back up a little bit too, we did have a Committee of the Whole with our budget on May 12th and we've got the handout, it's on Board Book. I don't think I need to review anything necessarily about our Committee of the Whole budget meeting other than we have another one coming up next week. CFO Erickson.
I just would like to share that I know there was a few board members who weren't able to come. I think we have at least one scheduled, but if any board member who wasn't able to attend, you can just reach out to Brett, we'd be happy to schedule some time, although it's ruining to watch the YouTube. So you could certainly do that and if you have any follow-up questions, you can ask for that too. All of the documents that were shared at that meeting are out on Board Book, so you can see all of those documents that we talked through. Very much looking forward to our next round on Thursday, the 26th.
Can I ask a quick question? So I just was looking up, you have the ESAR update, the spending and budget expenses as a 5-1 2022, so that is the documentation of how we've spent our ESAR dollars, correct?
These are either what has been spent or encumbered. So these would be things that, there's some things that won't get transferred to ESAR until the end of the school year. All of our staff that are being funded through ESAR, we have the big payoff payroll, so we're only about 70% of the way through right now, so there'll still be another 30% of wages that will be associated with those. But I think it's a fairly good updated list so that you can see that of the just shy of $11 million, I think we're at about 10.9 million of revised spending. The majority of that is actually in our secondary education or in our pupil or instructional support services. So the majority of those dollars are people that have been invested into this school year. And be happy to answer any of those questions either, give me a call. I think that goes over in pretty good detail.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
You're pointing.
I know, I'm pointing to you. I'm raising my hand, but I was.
So you have a point, a question, a question to CFO Erickson?
Well, not so much, but she did mention that this, that budget meeting that we had is on YouTube and so for the public, just to know that if you want more background information on our budget process, that's had a lot of great information in there, including ESAR funding as well as a lot of other topics. So our staff, you know, the public, that's open for them as well.
Thank you. And I think you'll see from that that there are many, many positions that were funded through the ESAR funding in addition to the nearly $4 million last year and this coming budget year that will be put back into the budget, which largely goes to staffing as well. So that's hopeful to have pointed out.
So moving forward on our agenda, we're on Number Nine, Letter C, the Policy Committee and Alternative Chair, Loffler Kemp, that chairs our Policy Committee, to just review that.
Okay, great, thank you. And I just appreciate our staff and the couple other board members that serve on the Policy Committee with me, member Sad Home and member, Sadowski. Thank you, Member Sadowski, I do appreciate you. And through the wonderful technology, I was able to do that while I was caretaking of my daughter, so, out in Colorado, so thank you. We had a lot of items on the agenda and we had a lot of first readings and then second readings. And so I want to just kind of preface it by saying too, that all of the policies that we discussed in more detail are available for people to see. And as I think board members know, that a lot of the first readings on policies and the policies brought to us are model policies from our School Board Association as well as the Superintendents Association. And they always do all the legal, we have legal checking of why we have to do certain things with policies. So I just kind of note that. And then, so the update is, we had Policies for First Reading is 508, Extended School Year for Certain Students with Individualized Education Plans. And this is a new policy. It supports our current practices though and it's recommended by the School Board Association that we adopted as is. The second policy for first reading was 518, DNR, DNI Orders Replacing Policy 5160. And that is specifically concerning serving students with complex health needs. And this is an updated policy and Director Jason Crane kind of highlighted that it really gives more specifics and it has more bullet points if you compare the two. And so it's recommended that we adopt that as well, that updated policy. And then the third one is Policy 535, Service Animals in Schools. And this is a very comprehensive policy. We had not had a policy before. And again, this is a model policy from the School Board Association, so be sure to look at that. And while this is referenced in our public comments, I want to mention that we did talk about as a board in that committee about the kind of education we can do with students and families, so that was discussed. And we look forward to you continuing conversation with our Director Jason Crane on this and we'll work with him. And Jason, again, just really appreciate you coming to this policy meeting again. So many of them fell underneath your department, so appreciate the work you did ahead of time to help us understand the policies better. And then the next policy was Policy 615, Testing Accommodations, Modifications and Exemptions for IEPs, Section 504 plans and LEP students. And this again is a new policy, but again, we've had a lot of current practices that we're already doing, so it's more formalized and yet through a policy. So that's the first readings. Policies for second reading.
Is number four, 615, is that also, since it's a new policy for us, is that a model MSBA or is that one we?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
And I was just going to confirm it with both MSBA as well as NASA.
Okay.
Yep. And so again, we looked at them, all of these policies. This is our first reading, so we'll be reviewing all of them again for the second reading. So board members, if you have questions, let us know before that, June 7th is our next meeting. And then Policies for the Second Reading included 419, the Tobacco-Free Environment Policy, and it's to replace past policy 1140. The second one was 801, Equal Access to School Facilities. And again, we talked about that last month as well. And then Policy 802, Disposition of Absolute Equipment and Material. And then the last one for second reading, 807, Health and Safety Policies. And there were no recommended changes for our discussion. And then the last item was Regulations. And again, this is informational and that was Regulation 419R, the Smudging in Pipe Ceremonies Regulation. And really again appreciate our Director of Teaching and Learning at the secondary level, Jen Larva, for the work that she did bringing that forward as well as other staff. So those were the policies. And then the last item is, we, at that work session that we had for school board members on April 7th, we talked about some policy recommendations that our facilitator brought to our attention and so we're going to be kind of working through that over the next month or so as well. So you'll gain more information on that, but if you have thoughts, if you attended that training on April 7th, you know, let us know as well. So that was our meeting. Chair Local, thank you so much.
Any questions? Chair Oswald?
Much more of a comment. I just wanted to remind the public that any policies that we pass, if there's federal law or state law that contradicts our policies, it's the laws that are always superior to any policy that we have, but we would still like to know as much as possible if we contradict law so that we can adjust our policies to be in line. Also, that I'm sure Mr. Crane could probably find another school district that has dealt with service animals to find out what kind of training or handouts or how they coach kids to interact with the service animals or, you know, and how to behave, you know, handouts, you know, on the website, those kinds of things. I think we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but I think you could find those easily, I would hope, anyway. If that would make your life easier, anyway. And the last thing I just want to say is that those kinds of things are much more based in regulations, which aren't part of policy. So we have, we have like, how do you implement the policy as a regulation? So any handouts that we would give or train the kids, that doesn't have to be written into the policy itself, but it's still part of the process, just so, just so people are aware.
And Member Oswald, I thank you for bringing that up. That was something in the committee that we discussed with Director Crane, it's just kind of the educational piece and looking at what other school districts are doing. And so Jason, that he would follow up with that.
Can you be there next month?
Yeah, thank you and looking forward to that.
And I know that CFO Erickson and Mr. Spooner are working with Benisekway and others related to the smudging policy, just to make sure that, or not policy, but the smudging recommendation, to make sure that they're aligned with what we can do in school, but we're very supportive of the idea and very, very much looking forward to that work. I also wanted to say thanks to the team as a whole. As you can see, the policy agendas have been pretty beefy since we've been in a better place with COVID. And I want to say thanks to Member Loffler Kemp as well as my executive assistant, Ms. Paquette, for shepherding a lot of that work along with the rest of the team that's worked on those policies. We're catching up. Not for lack of many others trying.
Where do the, so where do the regulations live? So we pass a policy and then that's on the website, so then where would that regulation live for smudging? I'm just curious, and how would it be accessible to the public? Would it be in the student handbook, like?
The regulations are posted on this website as well.
And are they close to the policy?
Yeah, and the difference is, is it will have the same number as the policy, the regulation will have an R after it.
Got it, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a quick comment as well. I just wanted to thank Director Crane for coming to the meetings. It's really helpful just getting the explanation behind policy, specifically like, for example, Policy 508, just hearing, you know, that it's supporting our current services, our current practices. And I just found it interesting learning about just the vast number of kids that are served. So, thank you.
Thank you Chair Loffler Kemp. So is our second readings, I'm assuming, are on the consent agenda? Yes. On our, okay, I got it. So our agenda item number 10 is just General Board Committee Updates. Please remind me why we added that. There was a reason. Oh, yes.
To cover any of our board assigned assignments to represent on the other committees and boards in the community.
So for instance, you know, if Member Sadowski serves on the Park and Rec Committee, so if there was something, you know, that board members should know about those meetings, that this is where we're having it. I don't necessarily think you have to say anything tonight, but we've tried, we've done this before. We've done it somewhat under maybe other. But from time to time, board members, you know, ask questions about the other committees we serve on. So does anybody have something that?
I can talk about what I represent.
Okay.
I am on the EAC Committee with, along with Member Sadowski. And I believe Superintendent Magus talked about what EAC did on Monday, having their meeting with almost 50 members of the community participating in creating, excuse me, to create the strategic planning process or adding to it. And us two board members were asked not to attend because we're not part of this process at this time. I'm also on the Community Action Board with now-member Loffler Kemp this month is joining us. And we're in the process of hiring a brand-new Community Action Director, which should be finalized in the next week or so. And that's what we are doing there.
Thank you. I guess I'll throw it. So Member Derek Eater and I serve on the monthly Labor Management Committee, the Quality Steering Committee. So we're the school board liaisons to that. That meeting's happening on Thursday. And so one of the ways we as board members work to hear concerns from our staff is through serving on that monthly Labor Management Committee. So just an update on that, that's happening. And then as Member Oswald said, serving also on the Community Action Duluth Board, I had served on that board. And they were hoping to have some former board members come on as they're bringing in a new executive director. So I and about three other board members came back on the board.
I haven't often shared this. It's not a committee that the school board, that we assigned to me, but I was appointed by Governor, the time it was Governor, Governor Dayton? No, Governor, who was before Governor Walz? Was it Dayton? Okay. I was appointed by Governor Dayton. And then just in February, I was reappointed by Governor Walz to sit as the school board representative on the school, the BOSA Board, the Board of School Administrators. So every month, I'll go down this Monday. Now we're meeting more in person. We've done, we've done virtual for two years. And I sit on that committee and we oversee all school administrators licenses, Director of Special Education, Director, Superintendents, Assistant Superintendents, Principals, and Deans of Students. And so I sit on the licensing committee as a subcommittee of that. So I also then chair that committee. And we approve variances. Superintendent Magus, in his evaluation, shared with us that he's completed, when he came from Wisconsin, our Minnesota statutes say that you have to have a, you have to work towards a Minnesota license, and you have to prove that your coursework matches what Minnesota superintendents and Superintendent Magus had to go through that process. And that was that. So that's what I have to share tonight. It was, it's an honor to be representing our community, Duluth School Board, to have a place at that board, and to be appointed by the governor.
I can give a little update on the Parks and Rec Commission, since you brought it up. Our last meeting was on April 13th. And I guess the biggest thing was that the Lake Superior Zoo gave a master plan kind of update. So it was really fascinating to hear the, kind of the improvements and the vision for the Lake Superior Zoo moving forward, you know, as it connects to the school district. Obviously, it's a great resource for a lot of the youth in our community, an opportunity for school trips and learning about animals. And one of their biggest focuses is going to be just environmentalism moving forward and kind of educating on animals that are, you know, kind of battling extinction and things like that. So, yeah, that was the main part of that presentation.
Thank you. So moving on, we've got the consent agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion or questions? Our consent agenda, we have, you know, done this now for a while. And it's a way to kind of streamline our meetings and be able to move forward with approval. So seeing no questions, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our consent agenda passes 7-0. We have, under number 12, we have resolutions. And I have asked board members, so our first resolution is the approval of the Duluth Principals Association Collective Bargaining Agreement?
That's me. So we have Resolution HR-5-22-3886. Be it resolved by the School Board of the Independent School District 709 St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District 709 and the Duluth Principals Association, a summary of which is in the hands of all school board members, be approved and adopted for the period of August 1st, 2021, to July 31st, 2023 inclusive, and that the chairperson and clerk of the school board be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. That's Resolution HR-5-22-3886.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution HR-5-22-3886, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Our second resolution, the acceptance of grants.
I have that. Acceptance of grant awards to Duluth Public Schools. Resolution B-5223889. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms described by the donor in full. And whereas, acceptance of the grant is in accordance with the donor's terms in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept below-described grant from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to this organization, which we did earlier this evening, did earlier in the meeting. And Member Loffler Kemp made note of how generous and totality of these grants. I don't know, I just would like to quickly read through the terms on some of these, that these grants are covering audio recording studio, coffee and chocolate student businesses that create an outdoor classroom, Denfeld Drama Technical Intensive, Duluth ALC Environmental Education Program, Graphic Novel Initiative, Kindergarten Coders Computer Science Fund, Literature Circles for Everyone, Ode to George Morrison, Anishavi Artist Study, OEMS, Mobile School Store, Ojibwe Artist Frank Big Bear Drawings, Ashki, Inouin, Family Engagement, School Garden Restoration, Secondary Speech Language for Dean Middle School and East High School, Sensory Pathway for Piedmont, Small Scientist Snack Station.
Is that a small scientist snack station?
That was a separate one.
Two different schools, I remember, Eater.
Yeah, if it's a small scientist, you need to go to Stowe. The snack station will be at Midas World. Social Emotional School Community Rock Garden, Square Register Kit for School Store, Support for Winner Outdoor Play in Free School. I submit Resolution B-5223889.
I'll, any discussion, oh, no, he said the motion. I need a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting Resolution B-5-22-3889, the acceptance of grants, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. And our last resolution, Clerk Oswald?
I am going to be moving Resolution B-5-22-2890. The Resolution of Acceptance of Donations to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas, acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept, does accept the below-described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. They are going to be paying for quite a bit. There's in-kind and monetary donations, including $3,000 from Miller Hill Subaru, which will, which came through AdoptAClassroom.org. I'm sure that's going to be used wonderfully. There's student options and students in support of the ALC students, holiday auctions, where they auction off different things for the students, which is wonderful. So therefore, I move Resolution B-5-22-2890.
So we have 3890.
Well, I read it right there on my thing. It says 2890. If it's 3890, I apologize.
It's 3890. It clicks to table.
Okay. Second. Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Member Oswald, this is a roll call.
Yes. We have, we have learned through our many MSBA trainings that this is the one resolution that must always pass by a two-thirds majority vote and must always be called by a roll call vote, as listed in statute, which is something we have just learned.
This is necessary for donations, but not the grant?
Correct. Who knew? So I will be calling the roll call vote. Member Eater?
Yes.
Member Kirby?
Yes.
Member Loffler Kemp?
Yes.
Chair Loffler?
Yes.
I will be voting yes. Member Sadowski?
Yes.
And Member Sandholm?
Yes.
Chair, it passes 7-0.
That brings us to 13 special resolutions and action items. And we have none, 14. Any questions of other? I did realize that I did not review the upcoming meetings. I know that I have that. And it's on Board Book. I know that next week, we have our Thursday Committee of the Whole meeting that is going to be on our budget. And then?
The budget meeting is on Wednesday.
It's on Wednesday, yeah.
Yes, our CFO spoke. Because on Thursday, we do have the Gold Fine Teacher Awards in the evening.
And the Denfeld Honor Night as well. But I know I have that. So it is the week of May 23rd through the 27th. Yes, it's Wednesday, May 25th, at 4:30 at the United Health Group Building, our Committee of the Whole on Budget. And then May 26th, we have the Gold Fine. And that is being held at?
Lincoln Park.
Lincoln Park. At 7?
7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Lincoln Park Middle School Auditorium.
Thank you. If you've never been to Denfeld's Honor Night, that would also be something worthy of attending. It's an incredible opportunity to see, Denfeld is rich in scholarships because of generous alumni that have given money and it's been invested well. So our seniors really have an opportunity to further their education.
But I do believe that the Gold Fine Teacher Award is, will be rich in ice cream. So just saying.
So are we going to the dairy plant at the end of the meeting? Is that what I'm hearing? So number 15 is adjournment. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned.